Knock, knock, knock. Good evening. I call this December 1st, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated virtually via Teams meeting. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page. On December 4th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville's social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will now conduct a roll call of our council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao? Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will now recognize Councilmember Robati for a motion to invoke Rule 19.
I'd like to make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
Thank you. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. There are three discussion items on tonight's agenda: a sidewalk prioritization and project update, a capital projects update, and a CIP policy discussion regarding draft transit-oriented development and affordable housing policies. Mark Spagnoli, town engineer, will facilitate the first discussion item. Mr. Spagnoli?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Can anybody hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, very good. Thank you. For the record, Mark Spagnoli, I'm the town engineer here at Town of Morrisville. Tonight's presentation is an update and review of our sidewalk projects and prioritization townwide. So just to go over a little background, in 2015, the town council adopted a sidewalk prioritization program development policy, which we'll go over in a little more detail on the next slide. Between 2016 and 2019, the council approved annual allocations of $100,000 towards sidewalk and pedestrian improvement-type projects. In 2018, the council established the Sidewalk and Pedestrian Enhancement Capital Project Fund. Between 2018 and 2019, there were ongoing discussions about sidewalk projects, the various funding options moving forward, and the statuses of those projects. And this year, we started work, our survey work and engineering design work, on the top five ranked sidewalk projects that came out of the development policy. So we're going to go with that in more detail. So this was the adopted scoring criteria policy. It's based on five major criteria points: the availability of pedestrians based on housing density, proximity to public facilities, activity centers, and connectivity to transit options. Constructibility was another criteria point, physical constraints, costs associated with the projects, and whether or not it was being already considered from Department of Transportation or a private development project in the area. Safety is also another criteria point: street types, whether it's a local street, a collector, or arterial street where the sidewalks were going to be constructed, traffic counts and speed limits, connectivity, proximity to existing sidewalks and connections to the existing sidewalk network, and lastly, if the project had citizen and community support. Next slide? So we have, this is our project overview. These are the overall sidewalk gaps that were identified by the town. There are 34 projects townwide that have been identified. Some of these projects are on the same street and some of them were broken up into segments depending on the project. The legend outlines the various categories here. Some are in progress already, either by DOT or by private development, or even some by the town. And we're going to get into those details on the next slides. Next slide, please. So here we have the active projects. These are projects that are being undertaken by the town right now. I mentioned the top five ranked. There are top five here, as well as two other projects that were already in motion. So these are projects being undertaken by the town, as I said. Morrisville Carpenter Road and Airport Boulevard have funding from DOT. And the remaining five top-ranked were not committed by anybody else and are being funded by the town so far. And based on the DOT funds and our allocated funds, there's an additional $396,000 required to complete these projects. Next slide, please. So just to go over the status of these projects, Airport Boulevard is managed by the town. It has an 80/20 split funding-wise from DOT. We've completed the 65% design on this segment and we're working towards final design. And construction is anticipated for late 2021 based on DOT funding availability. Paramount Parkway is a project we're actually designing in-house. It's funded by the town and we're anticipating to go into construction in the spring of 2021. NC-54 Segment C, that one is being designed by a consultant. That work's been completed and we're doing internal reviews. And DOT is also reviewing that because it is on a DOT right-of-way. And we're anticipating to start construction in the spring of 2021 as well. Morrisville Carpenter Road, as you all know, is our major project coming up starting in January. The sidewalk work will probably be much later along the project, but that project's already in play. Northwest Cary Parkway, that's a design consultant project that we have a consultant working on. Again, town staff is doing reviews as well as DOT. And it's anticipated to start in the spring of 2021. Copley Parkway is an in-house design project and it's anticipated to start at the same time. We would need some additional funding to go to construction with that one. And the same for NC-54 Segment F. We're going to have a design consultant help us with that. And we will be looking for additional funding to get that into construction. Next slide, please. So this slide goes over the town betterment projects. These are projects that we would have to provide funding to DOT. We have four projects here that will require funding from the town. McCrimmon is a future DOT project. A portion of NC-54 is also a future DOT project. Church Street will be a town-managed project, but we do have betterment funds that will have to contribute here. And Lewis Stevens Drive is under construction now. And we are giving a contribution to the sidewalk work. These projects represent about $1 million in funding that's required. Next slide, please. So this list identifies the last projects that were identified by the town. They're future projects. They're not in play as of yet. They have not been identified as a DOT project or a private development project. So these are projects that we would undertake. There's various sidewalk gaps here that equate to about $2 million in funding. And there's three segments along NC-54, three segments along Lewis Stevens, two segments along International Drive, the sidewalk segment that would connect you into Morrisville Community Park from Morrisville Parkway, and a sidewalk segment along Sorrel Grove Church Road. Next slide, please. So just to summarize our sidewalk budget needs, and it basically puts all the slides together and shows the funding that we're looking for. The active project funding needs is about $400,000. Betterment project costs almost $1 million. Future estimated project costs a little over $2 million. And with the contingency, we're looking at about a total of almost $4 million in budget needs for these sidewalk gaps throughout the town. So just to give you an idea of what's expected in 2021, we're going to be starting construction for the top five ranked active projects. As you know, Lewis Stevens is already under construction. Morrisville Carpenter is anticipated to start in January. Airport Boulevard from McCrimmon to Factory Shops, looks like it's anticipated to start in late 2021 depending on DOT funding constraints. And as additional funds become available, we'll continue to work on and commence on other sidewalk gaps. That's pretty much it in summary. I don't know if anybody has any questions or any details they'd like to go over further. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, if you have a question or comment, go ahead and put it in the chat. I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Yes, hey, thank you very much, Mark. This was a great presentation. Just to clarify, the Lewis Stevens Segment D that's under construction, is that the one that runs from Gray Marble Road to Parkside Valley Drive in the back of Breckenridge?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that project already fully funded?
The DOT has provided their funding for all the roadway work in construction. We are in agreement to pay our betterment portion. Jeannie, I don't know if you can answer me in terms of whether we've already set aside that funding to pay that sidewalk work?
So that's something that will have to be incorporated with the budget, but we are aware of that.
I believe it was done because Benjamin got that when the project was getting approved.
So what does that mean? So that there are funds already set aside in the project budget or by the DOT?
Our betterment costs are already set aside.
Councilmember Garamella, we agreed to fund those. We have not set aside the money.
Correct, I agree with that, Martha.
Okay.
Okay, so then, because I think that it would be definitely desirable to have that sidewalk specifically finished by the time the road is finished. And the road, I think, is scheduled to be finished in January of '22? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought, so I guess I don't really understand. I'm sorry, Mark, if I'm being super thick about this construction stuff, but how is the sidewalk under construction if they're going to pretty much be blowing up and paving over that whole area?
So the sidewalk is just a portion of the project, and that'll come towards the end of the project. So at this time, they're just, they're getting all the right-of-way work done, the infrastructure, the utilities, and the roadway. And the sidewalk generally comes in at the end.
Okay, so the Lewis Stevens project is under construction, but the sidewalk is not under construction?
Yes, yeah, sorry. I probably should have clarified that a little better, yeah.
No, you know what? I think that's probably something like everybody kind of knows that's seen this presentation a number of times. Okay, and then, so all of these, so is that the same situation for all of these projects? Like, so the road project is expected to start where we see the date on this slide, and then the sidewalk will come towards the end of that project?
Sort of. So pretty much Lewis Stevens and Morrisville Carpenter are the two that are major roadway projects. So the sidewalks will come towards the end. A lot of these products are standalone sidewalk projects. So the other top five ranked that we're trying to push through now, those are standalone sidewalk projects. And so is Airport Boulevard. That's a standalone sidewalk project with some pedestrian crossings at the intersections.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Garamella with a comment, please?
Hey, Mark, my question is, I think this prioritization, right? I think several years ago, we had, we were given a spreadsheet to rank. And then you guys were also ranking it. And then somehow we came with this magic prioritization list. Of late, I have not seen that come back to the council or the scores of how it is because these are always evolving and changing based on the traffic, you know, how people go around. So do we plan to get that, an updated one, so that we are all on the same page? Because I think this is like several years ago that we are using this data, right?
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy. Well, we're perfectly happy to send you over the updated list. It's based on the ranking criteria that was determined by the council in the sidewalk policy. But yeah, we're happy to send it over. It's no, no problem. I think we just kind of prettied it up with colors and made the legend a little clearer, but it's pretty much in a similar fashion than it was at the beginning.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand, like, you know, yes, we did give the prioritization at the time, but which projects to go? You know, say if you have already lined up for 2021, if for 2022, there are some urgent projects we need to be bumped up, what is the procedure for that?
So right now, we're taking them in ranking order based on the criteria. If there's some adjustments that need to be made, we're happy to review those and make those adjustments at the will of the council.
So Martha, will we get the list sometime during the retreat, sometime next year?
So I think that's something that council will have to discuss. As Mark mentioned, the program has been put together based on the criteria that these projects met. If you're asking to reconsider the criteria, we'll need to bring that back. Or you will have to define a protocol by which you would move projects around. So we'd need some more guidance and direction from council. I think what Mark's tried to illustrate is a plan and program for all of these projects. It just takes some time and some funding commitments. If you recall what we did after we developed this and we had four projects at the time that were going on that got extended, delayed, a lot of that was the back-and-forth approvals with NC DOT. We've learned a lot about how much the right-of-way takes to secure, et cetera. Then weather became a play. All of those things paused. And we were experiencing increased costs in our projects. So we paused on this project prioritization list to allow those projects to get complete, assess how much money we had set aside. And that's part of what Mark has used to start the design work on these projects. It also takes some time to get the projects designed. And Mark has developed a plan to make progress on all of the projects. But as he said, if council wants to revisit the criteria, et cetera, that would be the guidance and direction we need.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Garamella. Thank you, Town Manager Page. So I guess to somewhat summarize, one of the slides said $396,000 to complete the seven, essentially the five new ones and the two in progress. So that will be the ask of this upcoming budget cycle. Would that be an accurate statement? To make sure we get that at least that much?
It could be a part of the budget cycle. It could also be one of those things that council could revisit as we hit that next milestone in our financial year, which is supposed to come in January after we know where we are at mid-year. You've received the quarterly report. You've received the fund balance report. You're talking about your bond projects. There are a variety of mechanisms that you could choose. I think the important thing is funds are necessary currently and funds will continue to be necessary to support this part of the sidewalk project program.
Okay, that's very helpful. I like, Councilmember Garamella would be interested in knowing how to move forward on things past these seven and what the procedure would be. But I had a quick question. On Slide 5, Segment F from NC-54 Airport Boulevard northerly to Perimeter Park Drive. I expect this stretch of roadway will be widened in the hopefully near future. So I want to make sure that we're building the sidewalk far enough back that we will not be tearing it out when the widening occurs. A good example of this is the Extra Addict Stealth Storage Company up on Chapel Hill Road where that sidewalk segment is so far back. So could I get clarification from staff that the sidewalks we're building now are far enough back that when 54 is widened?
Yes.
They're in the right place?
Mayor, that's correct. We did take that into consideration in our design of the sidewalks, yes.
Okay, excellent.
And if I may add, Mayor, that also influences the timing of some projects and why Mark would have prioritized some of them earlier than later. We do not want to put a sidewalk in only to have roadwork change it.
Okay, that makes good sense. One of the five moving forward is the Northwest Cary Parkway. It indicates that we're going right to... Are we going to meet up with the Cary sidewalk? Or is there going to be a possible remaining gap there?
No, we are meeting up with the sidewalk and we're providing also a crosswalk along, I think it's Rain Brook Drive, yes.
Is there any way to coordinate with Cary? Since we'll already have contractors in place to go ahead and fill the little gap on their area too? Or coordinate with them because part of a sidewalk and then it's no longer in our control? There have been any discussions with Cary about that?
No, yes, there has. We actually are working with them so we can get that connected all the way through.
Okay, that's great news.
Yes.
Thank you. On Slide 6, I was curious about why it lists Perimeter Park Drive as the endpoint for the McCrimmon extension? Because I thought from 54 eastward towards Evans was already completed. So should the endpoint of that work actually be Davis Drive or?
You said, what slide was that, I'm sorry?
Slide 6.
Slide 6. The McCrimmon one?
Correct, I'm, because...
Let me check on that one, Mayor, because that one, we got that one off of the DOT project list. I'll check on that for you.
Okay, because I think that portion from 54 to perimeter is already done.
Yeah, that's right.
And what else? Also, I was curious about how we're going to address the sidewalk crossing of 54 and the railroad tracks. I know that was an issue at Aviation and Morrisville Carpenter. Will there be a pedestrian crossing over the tracks?
As of now, no. We're still working out those details. Same thing's happening to us on Morrisville Carpenter. We're not going to have a crossing over the railroad right-of-way when you get towards Chapel Hill.
Okay, and eventually we'll have the grade separation there. So that should take care of that.
Yes.
Okay. And I just want to... Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I have just put, Councilmember Garamella asked a question in a chat that I think is important for council to recall, is we set aside the funds that had previously been allocated to projects into a reserve fund so that we did not lose that and have it float in and out of the fund balance as we wanted to show our commitment to sidewalk projects. However, we have not put any money into that sidewalk fund in the last two budget cycles. So this is the restart, the relaunch, and the sidewalk update is sort of the purpose of this presentation to illustrate that staff has a plan to accomplish the goals of the prioritization that a council previously established. If council has specific questions, it might be better to collect those and allow Mark to review those rather than go over them line by line. If council wants to talk about changing the prioritization or the policy, that might be the focus of your discussion.
Okay, we have an hour to go over. We have a good presentation here. So I'd say let's go ahead and have questions answered. And then we can also talk about larger policy issues because we do need some catching up on our sidewalks. We haven't been making a lot of progress in the last few years. As you mentioned, we haven't been setting aside the last two years. So I guess my goal from a policy perspective was, would be to have staff let us know when funds are needed to keep these moving in an expeditious manner, these seven that are identified, and also any opportunities to move things even further. You know, $4 million total is necessary. I do think we need to have some catching up to do. So I'd be interested in staff showing us a means to move forward on all these things in the next couple of years. Also, I enjoy in one of the later presentations that it talks about calendar year quarters as a breakdown. So if we could start to be really consistent amongst all our discussions about future projects, either moving into fiscal year quarters or calendar year quarters or whatever works best for staff so that we're always talking apples to apples. So those were my questions. I appreciate the answers there. I'm looking back into, I believe it was Mayor Protem Johnson, then Ms. Councilmember Fender, and then Councilmember Rao. So Mayor Protem.
So, Mark, if you could go back to your slide number eight where you talk about the budget needs? And I think we've already talked about the first line where the needs for '21 and '22. But how, is there... Well, I guess I'm going to make a comment. I was going to ask a question, but I'm going to make a comment. I think probably the quickest way we're going to be able to fund the projects we want, whether we reprioritize or not and change the criteria, is going to be through a bond referendum. I think that we need, you know, we're looking here, as Mark said, about $4 million worth of projects. And if we're only going to set aside $100,000 a year, which we haven't done the last two years, it's going to take a long time to get through this list. So I would say when we're talking about our bond conversations, that I would like to see this part of that conversation and on a list along with other projects to go through a bond referendum in November. Otherwise, unless, Mark, you have any other thoughts on how we're going to fund this?
I leave that to Jeannie for us to come up with some creative ideas. But that's probably a good idea. I mean, that's very common across many municipalities across the nation. During a bond referendum, they consider sidewalk projects to be added to the list.
Okay, and I like the idea that we have a list now that we can share with the public. If that's, you know, if that's what council chooses to add sidewalks to the bond in November, we have a list of projects that we can share with the public to let them know exactly what would be included. So I think it's really important that we've done this work or that you've done this work, Mark, and that councils have set up a policy with our prioritization list so we could get to this point and we can be prepared to share some really detailed information with the public. So thank you.
Thank you.
And a follow-up to that for Jeannie. And sometimes bond funding is used to reimburse prior payments. So if we use fund balance to do some of these sidewalks now, we could still reimburse from later bond if we do that in order to expedite projects?
So there are parameters in which you can qualify for reimbursement. Land acquisition's the best one. It has to be hard cost. So yes, if you were to construct, that could be something that could potentially be incorporated into a resolution with intent to reimburse. But that has to be done at the time that the expense is actually laid out. And then the projects have to be done. I believe it's within an 18-month time period. So there are parameters that we have to follow. It's not just write a resolution of intent. They're rules. But it's something certainly staff will evaluate and take into consideration and bring forward if necessary.
Thank you. Was that it for now, Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Hey, thanks, Mark, for this presentation. It's good seeing all of the list in front of us. Can you go back to Slide 3, please? So we have this ranking here, and maybe you explain this, but how did we go from this ranking to the seven active projects that are being worked on? On Slide 4.
Yeah, so what we did was, two of them were already in play. One of them is Airport Boulevard and the other one is Morrisville Carpenter. Those were funded from the DOT. The other ones were basically projects in ranking order, even though it jumps from 1, 5, 6, 11, 16, et cetera. The other projects that were in between that got left out were products being undertaken either by the DOT in a different project in a different project or by a private development project. So that, that's why there's this different color coordination. So these are essentially the next ones that had not been picked up by another type of project.
Okay, I understand. So like, for example, Church Street from McCrimmon to Church Street Park. Is that one being picked up by the developer?
That one, is that number four? Yes, that one's actually an upcoming project this year. We're going to be managing the project and that one has funding from the Department of Transportation. So if, if project was already being picked up on somebody's list, that's why it wasn't in, in line here as an active project. These were products that were not picked up at all in, in ranking order.
Well, is it possible to get a status on the rest of these? Like add an additional column to this list on slide three? I mean, like for me, it would be helpful to know, okay, number two is being worked on by the NC DOT and the timeline is whatever it is. Like it's under construction right now.
We can certainly provide that and I apologize, I actually do have that. There's many other columns here. Some of them were more construction related and there is a column for the timing. And I should have put that in here, I apologize. I'll send that, I'll send that when we send the, the list out to council.
Okay, that'd be great. And does it, does it include a note as to who, whether it's a developer or the state working on it?
Uh, yes, yes, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Skargans Johnson, please, and then we'll circle back.
Okay. Mark, the, the 3 million, and this sort of goes in line with Mayor Portem Lus Johnson's point. The total outstanding projections, do you, do we foresee impact on town funding needs based on DOT revenue shortfalls? I'm just trying to get a sense of, maybe you already separated it out for us, but I'm just trying to get a sense for how much of that money is coming from the DOT versus how much of it is on us? Because I'm really concerned about the DOT and where they are right now during the pandemic and even after the pandemic. We've had a number of projects put on hold. Now they're, they're back on the queue, but you just never know. It's sort of living month to month at this point with their department.
Yeah, as of now, these, these numbers reflect DOT's funding availability. What did change on some of these projects is they had them, like as an example, they might have had a project on fiscal year 23, 24, and it might have got moved to the following year. Just because they, they know there's going to be some funding issues. But generally, these numbers do reflect the, the 80/20 requirement and the betterment costs that were already determined by the DOT.
So we haven't been notified of any potential delays on anything on this list. But we can, we never can control the future, but as of now.
Right, they, they did, the ones that are active are, are okay. Some of the future ones, the, for example, some of the ones in yellow, they, they did get pushed out. And I do have that, when I send you guys the updated list, I'll send it to you with that column open so you can see the fiscal years that were outlined for those projects. Some of them did get pushed back a little bit.
Okay. And the other question I had, the, um, well, first of all, I like the idea of a bond, but I think a bond should be combined with a larger kind of maybe transportation bond where we identify, you know, the bonds language can be general enough that the way I would look at it, it would be enough revenue raised for the bond that could go into sidewalks or road projects. So you, the language is usually broad enough, but as we sell it to the public, I think, you know, Mayor Portem brought up a good point, sidewalks would be one, but say, no, we're going to take this money. This is just thought for all of us. The final question is, in our transportation reserve fund that we have, can that fund, excuse my, I, I can't remember. The, we, we dedicated a percent of the tax rate to transportation. Is any of that money able to go to sidewalks or does it have to be for road projects? I mean, like, what can go to sidewalks?
So the capital reserve fund for transportation projects does speak primarily towards those roadway improvements and transit-related improvements. As council, you control the definition of what that capital reserve segment to work towards. So if it is something that you would as an entity like to be adjusted, it can. That's within your control. You're committing those dollars in a very specific way. You control how they're committed.
Okay.
And to answer your question for bond ballot question, you actually can combine transportation and sidewalk in the same general question. That was something that we talked about with bond council the last time we, we were going down this road, so.
And as we do, okay, and then as we did, I'm just trying to think out of the box of revenue sources we might be able to dip into if we need be, but also like when we get development, you know, the good news is we've got development projects coming in the queue. We take the payment in lieu. Is there, that's a fund as well, right, that we might be able to? But normally we would say, you know, a developer is going to pay 150 times the, the, the cost of the sidewalk, right? That money comes into the town, into our coffers. Can that money be reinvested as well or is that something?
So street paving and lieu is restricted source. So as it's identified through the conditions of a site plan approval, if it's for sidewalk segment, we will certainly recognize that revenue appropriately as it is that restricted type source.
Okay. I think the final thought is just any lookout for any kind of federal grant dollars, surface transportation programs. I mean, I know that money is really tight, but with a new administration coming in, you know, if they were, if they were going to invest more in an infrastructure and then there was an opportunity, so that might be something we can talk to, you know, our congressional delegation about down the road. But thank you for this. It was a very helpful presentation, Mark. It's very helpful to see all of these projects with the priorities, so thank you.
Councilmember Skargans Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was fortunate enough to be on the council when we had this sidewalk prioritization first conceived. And at that time, we were identifying areas of the town that were so-called orphan segments. Areas that had been developed, but the sidewalk had not been developed at that time. I mean, currently when we have new developments, sidewalks are a part of that. But in years past, they have not. So we had the ability to maybe get a list and prioritize and so forth. I'm really happy to see that Morrisville Carpenter Road, which is one of those old segments with the expanded road footage, will get sidewalks finally. And it does look like it's included already. It's already an allocated cost, which is great. So you cannot close out that project without sidewalks. That's what I'm thinking.
That's correct. For sure, no worries.
Yes, yes. But that leads me to my next point is that the goal of the sidewalk prioritization is to connect our community with each other. It's like right up there with the greenway. So greenways are a great way for people to get out and exercise and to move from one area to the next. But sidewalks are just as important. So, you know, as Councilmember Rao said, let's look for, if we can, grants that would be applicable for healthy communities, bringing community segments together, partnering, you know, with different entities such as NC DOT, although I think they're just dealing with a lot of major projects right now and just getting those funded. But we, we need to consider why this list is important and what success looks like. To me, success looks like if we can connect Breckenridge to the rest of the town through some sidewalk projects. And then if that was a goal, I'm not saying it is, but if that was a goal, we would prioritize those projects to the top and then work through the list that way. If we wanted to create a, a better network on another side of town, then we should prioritize it that way. I know that we're looking at a lot of money here, but we need to look at grants, other revenue sources. And if that's not possible, prioritize so that you can connect different areas of the town and then move systematically through that way. So thanks.
Okay, I believe everyone's had a chance to comment. We'll go around again if anyone wants to share. Essentially, kind of need an affirmation of the seven that they're talking about now and the 396 that we're mostly on board with moving forward with that. And then a lot longer, deeper discussion might be changing the prioritization strategy as Councilmember Skargans Johnson, as I said, and Satish maybe has hinted at a little bit. So we'll start with Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to advocate for moving, I think they were projects 30, 31, and 32, the Louis Stevens A, B, and C up in the priority order because of that construction that is about to be completed in that area. As long as that construction was not complete and there was no way to, to backdoor out of Morrisville down Louis Stevens Drive, I think that there was some, there was some measure of safety, not a lot, but some, you could walk on the side of the road there and people do every single day and possibly without taking your life in your hands. Once that road is completed, I see that as a clear and present danger as people are going down Louis Stevens Drive to get out the back to Little Drive to Target. I think I'm very, very concerned that, that the speed on that road is going to increase and also the volume. And those three, the three areas that we're looking at here, 30, 31, and 32, those areas of Louis Stevens Drive are quite curvy and dangerous now under the best of circumstances if you're walking along the side of the road. So understanding that those are currently unfunded, I would like to explore options to move them up in the priority order just because the, the situation in the, in that area is about to change and I'm very concerned about it.
Okay, so the circumstances have changed on that. So maybe staff could take a first look at using current prioritization protocol, whether or not safety is one of those that was undercounted earlier as a way to start and staff can bring back how those might change and become more priorities. Does that sound reasonable, Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, I actually saw safety on the list, which is why I brought up possibly reprioritizing those segments based on the fact that the safety factor is about to take a huge spike. So yeah, that would be satisfactory. Absolutely.
Because one of those things is looking on the side and seeing if there's already a well-worn path. So I think, as you said, most people are already using that that way. So that's a very important point. Okay, Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what Anna's saying. It's more of, that was my first question when I asked, is this list getting, you know, ranked every year or is it with what we went initially? Because things and circumstances do certainly change. And I think I agree with what Vicky said, we started this with the intent to find any of the orphan sidewalks if, if there was a multi-path greenway. And so obviously that will, at least we wanted something that people could walk in that area. And so I am very much interested to look into the policy again and, and see, you know, how and what it was, because it's been a long time. I couldn't, I don't recollect the rankings. And if there are certain projects that need to be pumped up, I think that would be a good way to, you know, work through it and, you know, come up with a consensus so that it's easy for the staff to move forward. And said that, I had a question back on what Donna said, Mark. Especially on McCrimmon and Church. We own the, the Carrington property, so that area is still going to be orphaned, right? Are you saying that the DOT is going to pay for that?
Which, which project is that in this rank here?
Number four.
Oh, number four.
Yeah, because see, that's, if you look really closely, it's a residential. They are only going to do their part and, but there's still a property which is owned by us that has to connect between that residential multifamily to the Church Street. And that is critical because we have seen people walk on that area and there is not a proper sidewalk there and we own that piece of land. And so I wanted to ensure because it's like, it is not very clear because I can tell you for sure they have no reason to connect that because they are responsible only for their part of what the land is for the sidewalk.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll get into the, the details of it when we get back into the office. That, that's actually a project that we're going to, to manage the design and construction. And the DOT is going to reimburse us at the 80/20 rate. So I'll, I'll get into the details of that and, and see what's going on with that and make sure we get that taken care of.
Okay, all right, and so I would be quite open to go back to the policy design, what, how the council wants to do it.
Councilmember Fender, please, followed by my comment.
Okay, yeah, and I definitely appreciate what Satish was saying about that section in front of that Carrington property of checking on whether that's going to be addressed by the developer there or not. But in response to your question, T.J., our mayor colleague, I am, I wouldn't, I would like to revisit the priority with some of these. I've, just looking at this list in the, with the limited funds, I, I really believe that a higher priority should be given to residential areas as opposed to like Paramount Parkway or there's another International Boulevard or International Drive. I think we need to connect our residents and ensure their safety and make those streets a higher priority.
Okay, so my comment was kind of on that same vein in that there's two different ways to approach this, in my opinion. Either we can increase the funding, continue the seven that we have in process and then sort of move the red line further so we can do more things. Or we can change gears and replace some of the ones we're working on with other ones, which is kind of giving staff, changing the targets a little bit. So I'm, I'm more in favor of just funding more, finding more funding and committing to that. I think it's important also to support the business community to a certain extent who want to also walk in that area. So I understand the, the wanting to get to the residents first and definitely connecting Breckenridge. I think a big part of that is going to be crossing Davis Drive at McCrimmon. And we know that that large project is being postponed. So we've talked about crossing Davis at that point for a long time and we've never really bitten the bullet to do that. So I think there are a number of different things that we're all trying to do. And I think a lot of it can be addressed by bringing the funding back to where it needs to be because we are kind of behind right now. But I think we've given staff direction to essentially reassess some of the prioritization. I think, is it true that staff just, just did that just before, other than the Louis Stevens Road? Is this all refreshed prioritization according to our policy at this time?
It's somewhat refreshed, Mayor. It's, it's very similar to the original prioritization.
Okay. So it sounds like, do you, have you heard from council slightly more robust reprioritization might be in order at this time? To sort of take another look at this, add a few columns to these slides and bring it back to us. But generally, I think we're mostly going forward with the ones in progress, those seven on the main slide. Am I summarizing adequately for everybody? Looking for comments.
I think so. I'm not sure. I think so. I'm not sure if you were asking the council or the staff.
A little bit of both. Mayor Portem Johnson?
So I think staff has brought us a number of projects that they're already looking at and working on that we probably need to move forward on, like you said, TJ. I think it's important to continue the work that's been done. And then if we need to, and it sounds like we do, because I'm hearing a couple of people say that we need to relook at how we're prioritizing, maybe that's a topic of retreat, where we take a look at the policy, make some changes, and then from then on, you know, relook at all these projects and move them around. And to Councilmember Rabadi's comments about the Louis Stevens project, I'm not sure, I think that kind of timeframe would work. I mean, Mark, you can weigh in on this, but it sounds like that kind of timeframe would work, because the Louis Stevens project is going to go on now for the next year, well, into 2022. So we're not losing that window of opportunity there. Is that fair to say, Mark?
Yeah, I would say so. We have time, it doesn't have to happen today. We have time to, you know, since, like you said, the Louis Stevens that's under construction now isn't going to be completed till 2022. So we have time to get those other ones on board, if the reprioritization will work that way.
Okay, so we can kind of give staff the okay to move forward as they have done, continue the work they're working on. Then we, as a council, need to revisit the policy, take a look at it at retreat, make the changes we want. And then staff has, from then forward, has kind of the marching orders, how to continue. And I'm going to repeat again, I think if we really want to make headway, you know, we can look at fund balance now to maybe bump up a couple of projects. But I think if you really want to make a lasting improvement on this list of projects, we need a fairly substantial bucket of money. And I think, you know, wrapping a sidewalk bond into an overall transportation question is going to be key.
Okay. That makes sense. That sounds like a good, solid path forward. Want to say one last thing about number 29. That's Church Street between Mason Farms northward. That's essentially the only segment left to connect the north-south route on sidewalks. You can essentially go from the bottom right of Morrisville to the top left in Kits Creek, other than that small segment. So if we're looking to do any connections, so people can walk, because now they can do east-west, and once you can go north-south also. Once again, Breckenridge is kind of the outlier on that other side of Davis. So I think that should also be an important priority, moving that over some. Okay. So any last thoughts, looking for chat? Sounds like we have a good plan forward, and that it doesn't push things out so much. One other thing I want to say is that these are roadway sidewalk segments that, if you do the survey work and the engineering planning in advance, those are things that if they sit on the shelf, those don't go stale, because those don't really change. So that would be another option, is to try to front-load some of that, so that those plans are ready to go, essentially shovel-ready. And that would make it easier later on to try to pull the trigger on the construction, because these are only becoming more expensive. So that's just something we should always keep in mind, that there is some urgency around this, because we do have lots of priorities. But connecting our community safely is always a high one, is what I hear from all our fellow council members. Okay. So, Mr. Spanioli, thank you so much. A lot of hard work went into this, obviously, and you weren't here when we first did it. So thank you for bringing yourself up to speed and moving us forward on these important projects. Any last thoughts?
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 4B, capital projects update. Brandon Zudema, our Assistant Town Manager, and Mark will once again be facilitating this item. Assistant Manager Zudema.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for a few minutes tonight. And again, I have both Mark and Jerry Allen with Parks and Rec with me tonight. We're happy to take questions, as you may have them. In your packet, you have updates on 11 different town capital projects that are underway. Those are projects that come out of the Engineering Department, our stormwater group out of Parks and Rec, and then one public works project. So for those that don't have the packet at home, basically, each of these updates includes information on the project, who's managing it, which of our departments are involved, along with the partners that we may be collaborating with, reflects the original project budget, a brief summary of what the project was intended to do. It also includes strategic plan alignment as we continue to pursue those goals, shows you where the current project status is and any challenges or delays we may have had, and then the estimated project completion. Again, we have a couple of these that are completed projects and others that are currently underway that you're aware of. I am happy to start by just taking any questions you may have, rather than reading through the 11 updates that you have in front of you.
I'd start by just saying, this is really great information, and it's so nice and easily digestible. And I really love the fact that there's milestones in there by calendar year, by quarter. So I just want to say thank you very much for all the hard work that went into accumulating all this data and information. I'm looking over in the chat window for any comments or questions that anyone might have. That last picture was pretty stunning, the Fairview flooding. Reminds me a little bit of Sierra Fork District Park there. Okay, so did you want us to react to this in some way, or are you just providing this more as information? Is there any asks?
There are no asks, Mayor. This was intended, we have had sort of piecemeal conversations at different points along the way, asking about different things. So our intention is to do this on a recurring basis for those projects that may not otherwise be coming in front of you on a scheduled basis. Most of our projects have milestones that we would bring back before you, whether that's around funding or going from design to construction. But these 11 are just some that haven't had updates recently or recently completed, and we wanted to share that with you. So really, the intent is to share information, no ask, but happy to take any questions or offer any clarification.
Okay, we have some questions and comments bubbling into chat, so I'll first recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Portem Johnson, please.
Thank you. Brandon, I had one question on the Crabtree Creek Nature Park and the delays that have occurred because of the, pulling it up so I can read it, because of the flood plain.
Yes, ma'am.
So is the design going to change drastically because of that? Are they having to redo the design that they presented to us a few months ago?
No, our hope is that they will not have to. So we have had ongoing conversations with CLH, our design consultant, and also with Wake County and with NRCS, who ultimately make some of these decisions about disruption of the flood plain area. So we met with them, Jerry and Kyle and I were on a call with them probably two or three weeks ago, and they, CLH is doing some additional design work or some additional specifics about this intended design and how they intend to accommodate for that work that was done before we ever took possession of the property, to sort of go back to where what we're doing would be on top of what should have been correct back then and unfortunately was not. So, sorry, longer answer to a simple question, which is, no, right now, we don't anticipate that they should have to redesign. We may have to, you know, slightly shift an amenity here or there, but we do not anticipate anything significant. We should know better within probably the next four to six weeks.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the update on this project.
Yes, staff has been, Jerry and Kyle have been working, you know, very hard to collaborate with CLH and to get some answers here. And this was just something we didn't anticipate initially.
What would be the next milestone? Because it's saying here, design is estimated to be completed the fourth quarter of calendar year 21. So will we get, I mean, that's a year off. Will we get another update, I'm hoping?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be back to you once we get sort of a final answer from Wake County and NRCS as to how we can proceed to let you either know that we're, you know, back full speed ahead, or that we're having to do some tweaking. But we should be able to be back to you in the next quarter or so with an update.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
Mayor Portem Johnson, please.
So I have a comment and a question. Brandon, this is great information. I like the format. I like the information that's shared. This is just really good product. Where and how are we going to share this with the public? I mean, I know they can look at it now through this, you know, this agenda item, but this needs to be out there for the public to view.
Yeah, so I think, one is that, of course, you know, this is available publicly, but more importantly, staff has been working over the last couple of months to update Morrisville Pro. And so we will be keeping that current again with project information and updates, so that citizens can go in and see where we are with these projects and how that progress is coming along.
Okay, okay. And, okay, so when will all that happen, then?
So much of that is already underway. We are just working on finishing up the updates to that, and that will be available, I would say, soon. If not, I have to look at what has been already made available through Morrisville Pro, but we are in the process of getting those updates completed now.
Okay, okay. All right, that's good, good to hear. And then I have a question about the seniors center. If you can give me a, I'm going to be really honest, a little disappointed that it's not open yet. I understand the challenges that y'all came across and the work that has to be done. But on this sheet, it says, and if I'm reading this right, it should be opening in the fourth quarter of calendar year 2020?
So the project should be completed in the fourth quarter of calendar year 2020. We will need just a little bit of time, sort of after completion, to do some of the final prep work, but we certainly will see it opening shortly thereafter.
Okay, because I know the seniors are meeting still at Cedar Fork for some programming, although limited. And I really do want to see them in their own facility as soon as possible. And I know we all do. I know we all do. So I'm looking forward to when this center opens.
Yes, ma'am. We are as well. Mark and Eric are there on a daily basis, keeping them pushed against the grindstone to keep that moving as fast as is practical to get that project complete and open.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah, just briefly, Brandon, will you notify us when these projects are, when these project updates are available in Morrisville Pro? Because I would like to share this information on my social media accounts and, you know, just to people. And also, would it be inappropriate to share these documents on social media, or what's the best way to do that?
We will absolutely notify you as we get Morrisville Pro updated, and these are certainly public documents. They are part of our agenda packet and can be shared publicly.
Okay, and are they available on the townofmorrisville.org website anywhere?
If you go into the agenda packets, they are in the packet that is under the government section. When you go to the agenda and schedule, they are available there in that packet.
Okay, so, but I mean, outside of the agenda packet, there's not like a section where we do project updates where they'd be available?
That's what the Morrisville Pro will be.
Okay, so would you mind sharing the link to, the direct link to these project documents, either in the chat on this, on the call, or via email?
I'd be happy to just send you the document.
That'd be super helpful. Thank you.
Excellent. Sounds like we're all very much looking to share this with the public, because this is really good information. So thank you very much, Assistant Managers Zudema and Mark and Eric for working on all of this throughout the time. I don't see any other comments or questions. So, Brandon, Mark, any last thoughts before we move on?
No, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you all for all this hard work. At 7:05, we're going right through the agenda, so we'll move on to the next item. 4C, CIP policy discussion. Jeanie Hooks, Director of Management Service, will facilitate this final work discussion item. Ms. Hooks.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can.
Excellent, excellent. Look forward to providing these drafts to you tonight, more importantly, receiving your input and your feedback on these policies. They were prepared using council's previous input and in correlation really to what are known related plans. I'm going to do really a quick overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to the chat box for questions, to start receiving your input and your comments. So let me start with the transit-oriented development policy. So the policy here, it speaks to really council's expressed interest in facilitating what you called, in your words, smart growth, to integrate network of regional transit options thoughtfully throughout our community. The policy does establish really some guidelines and framework that supports that initiative, that long-term initiative to achieve that vision of your TOD through good plan, land use planning to support the future commuter rails or any other transit options that you had. The priorities, Morrisville, it just has a really unique opportunity in its location alone, that it's so close to things like the airport, major employment hubs, Wake Technical Community Ecology, just to name a few. It really creates an opportunity to provide or develop a dynamic solution. I think that's what council was greatly interested in, to address issues such as traffic congestion, regional connectivity, environmental impacts, and more importantly, that lifecycle housing interest that you have. So other priorities is really recognizing that good transportation systems and development, they complement each other to create good sustainability in communities. So realizing this concept, it will allow us to hopefully take those steps forward in developing those multi-phased approaches like you did with Town Center. That's going to allow us to leverage those types of public investments, those innovative public-private partnerships and interlocal agreements, just to name a few. The priorities that are listed in here that did speak to or were stemming from your priorities that you shared with us through input, really through your land use, TOD, sub-area plan, those interests. In order to get or to make progress towards this, it's going to take some steps and some front-loaded work to really put our DUCs in a road effectively to move the needle and get to the place where we probably are with Town Center with TOD. So with that, I'm going to pause. Of course, there's other sections here that speak to funding, and of course, maintenance, if it were to become a town public asset. So I'll stop there and open up the chat for questions, comments, and input. Remember, this is a draft, and it needs to represent what the entity's wishes are. So here to listen.
So I just had a quick comment. I really appreciate this work, and I think you made a very salient point in that this may end up being kind of similar to our Town Center efforts, which is much more of a frontburner item for me. I want to make sure that we don't lose opportunities in the TOD area, but it's not where I'm focusing most of my attention. One thing I would like to say is that BRT, not just commuter rail station, I think it's important to mention that, because that's going to be the sooner thing that's definitely going to happen. So I have a high support for the BRT, being part of the transit-oriented development as we move forward.
Is that, let me make sure I'm clear. Are you referring to bus rapid transit?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I just need.
I was looking forward to the summaries.
Okay.
I'd add, instead of just saying support future commuter rail, I'd say support future commuter rail slash BRT.
Okay.
For level of commitment to the BRT. Site control of other areas and priorities around town for Town Center and Parks and Open Space take precedence for me. But if an opportunity to secure some site control in the TOD area, I'd rather do it rather than lose the opportunity. So those are my thoughts on the TOD section. Councilmember Robati has a question?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question on the rapid transit development. How, it seems to me that everything about commuting has changed. And I'm wondering, how, how sure are we that that's still going to be a thing? I, I mean, I just wonder how many people by the end of the pandemic are still going to be truly commuting in that way over long distances versus working from home? It seems to me that that may be a priority shift for everybody and maybe should be.
That, that is a very valid point. Wake County Transit is addressing, trying to address that now through surveys and dealing with people and trying to figure out the future. That's definitely going to be a challenge. I think commuting is going to happen, maybe a little bit less, but I think it'll still be important. So do you have any more follow-up on that, Councilmember Robati, before I move on to next questions or comments?
We'll just agree to disagree. I think commuting is dead. Maybe, maybe I just hope it is. But I definitely think that long-range commuting like that is going to be seriously curtailed in the long run, just as it has been in the short run. So, yeah, that's, that's my whole comment.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Portem Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to follow up, you know, with a thought from Councilmember Robati's remarks about commuting is not going to be the same. I think that is a very important point. And people commuting for an hour, you know, to go to their employer, that behavior and expectation will probably be changed. People are going to want to work and live in nearby vicinity. But in the same sense, I see affordable housing as being even more critical, because there is a need to have adequate staffing for our local businesses in various capacities. It's not just the high-end tech. But we also need to have employees for our stores and our restaurants and our schools and our first responders. It's even more important to have a variety of housing that would allow them to have a shorter commute, if you will, or a shorter, you know, bus ride or, or shuttle or something like that. So we need to think differently. I agree. It's just now we need to think even more about what our housing stock and what our, and what that means for our future as it relates to a balanced community. So thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Wow, that's my bad. I was recognizing Mayor Portem Johnson. I apologize, followed by Councilmember Rao.
So I, I was going to, Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson and I are on the same wavelength, so I'm not going to repeat her comments. But I'll just echo them, second them. But I, I do want to make a comment about Councilmember Robati's comments. I agree too. I do think things are going to change, and we don't know what that change will be moving forward. And, and time is only going to tell how many folks stay home and work from home, and how many folks are, are back to doing the, the daily grind of commuting. So maybe, I'm trying to figure out how to, because I also agree with the mayor, where you don't want to just highlight commuter rail only. It needs to, so maybe the wording needs to be much more flexible and talk about transit options, just transit. Maybe we need to focus on transit in general, whatever that may be. I think the commuter rail station will happen. I, I think that will come in time. But whether we have BRT, or it's called something else, or there's some other method, maybe transit options, or it's, I don't know, Jeannie, I'm just, I'm just thinking off the top of my head right now, maybe more agreeable to, to all of us. Just a thought.
I do have to speak to your point, Mayor Portem. Under the purpose section, it's the second paragraph, the last sentence, does identify in the purpose that transit options should include, but are not limited to commuter rail, on-demand or shared rides, bus rapid transit, and other services, recognizing how transportation systems and development activity work together. So that was calling out, or that all-inclusive general statement that I, that I could flex that a little bit, make it more general, or emphasize more other services that support the changing influences, some, something to that effect, recognizing changing influences over time.
Yeah, I think, I think if you added just that little bit, that might be helpful, Jeannie. Then, then we were recognizing the fact that we're in a, as Town Manager Page told everybody this morning, in a transformational year. Or, not a year, but a transformational time. And I'm, I'm not sure where we're going to end up totally, or when this transformation ends. But maybe that'll help. But, but to your point, Jeannie, I'm, I'm rereading that line too. And that, that is a good line that you have in there. I agree. But maybe adding that last touch will be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, mayor. And I apologize for, I'm going to have to get IT to help me because I cannot find my chat button. So I apologize. I just, I don't know where it is. So, but I guess to reiterate the point that's already been made about how transit will change, I think a lot of it's also going to be just the changing expectations of customers, which is the, really the answer that we don't know. And, and, you know, for example, people may not want to go on a bus as much because of the crowds on the bus, you know. They may not want to be in a, in a, in a mode of transportation where they're closer to people. But we don't know how much of the COVID, after COVID is over, how much of the, of the societal expectations will change. So that's something that we don't know about. And I think that's something that the transit agencies are all going to figure out. If most cities around America, including Raleigh and Go Triangle, their, their, their revenues are down because their customers are down. The second component is what, you know, Councilmember Robati referred to, just the changing expectation of work. Many companies that I've been speaking to are so happy with just, many business owners are happy with not having their employees go to work, that they find that the productivity rates are increasing. People are liking the fact, I personally don't like it. I want to go back to working in an office all the time. But some people like the convenience. And so if that changes, then all of a sudden, from a policy perspective, people are going to want more connectivity in Morrisville, right here in the 10-mile radius of our town, if they're working and living and playing, which is all the things we're working on. But they may not have the need to go all the way to Raleigh as much, or Durham as much. Now, maybe these are all conjectures and speculation. We simply don't know. It's a little bit odd, actually, to think about that we're literally living through decisions and policies where none of us have ever been through something like this. You know, it could be the flipside, where, you know, people say, things come roaring back after the vaccine, and then people are just so wearying to get back on the road that, that they want to go back, right? So I'm just putting that food for thought. Um, you know, just in terms of just the kinds of things that we have to factor in. And I guess we'll have to be monitoring what Go Triangle and the Wake County, and how's the Wake County transit plan going to be affected by all of this. I know, you know, just in terms of the implementation of it. So anyway, those are just a couple of observations. Nothing that I'm saying isn't anything that you all haven't heard or probably have observed yourself. But I just wanted to bring that up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
You know, I think that even though commuting will change post-pandemic, I think that we still need a policy. And I still think commuting, whether it's by the bus rapid transit or commuter rail, is still going to be needed. You know, there's still, like, even though many of us are working from home because we're able, not everyone is working from home and, and, or is able to do that. And it's often those that are lower income, and they're the ones that need that, that public transit more than, than, than I do. So I feel, I still think it's, it's got to be an important initiative, especially for the town. Also, just from an environmental point of view, the more people we can get off the roads and cars will benefit all of us. I just think the commuting is going to be different, but it's still needed. Also, if I had a way to hop on a bus rapid transit and go down to Raleigh at night to see a concert or the symphony or whatever, I would love to do that. So I still think it, it's got to be, there's a place for it long-term. And I guess even too, want to bring up a point, just like, even though we may all be working at home, there are going to be times like when we may all, different workers want to come together at the frontier or other locations like that. So that may still be in the cards as well.
Okay. Good points. I mean, thank you for those points. I think that public transit is a public benefit, and it usually has some subsidy, either from the county level and municipalities. So I, I think that it will exist. But coming right down to brass tacks, if we want to really guide the development in this area, whether or not it becomes TOD or essentially a second town center, I think this policy will help us get there, in that it gives staff some guidance about trying to obtain site control. This goes hand in glove with our land acquisition policy, that if we want to make sure that this area is developed in the way that we hope, that we do need to make steps towards site control for different parts of it, for example. So I'm looking to Ms. Hooks to see if she has any other questions that she wishes us to react to in regards to the TOD policy as drafted.
No, I, I'm good, mayor. Good feedback from everybody. I think there's a place in the middle somewhere to, to accommodate the slight variances in opinions or, or vision here, so that we can create a win. It's important to get a policy in place. And as, and as you remember, we get it in place, we can certainly mature it or adapt it as time goes by. With, as with any policy, you should always have a, a process of evaluation.
Right. Okay, so we're all good with the purposes as listed on the screen right now. Essentially is a, an important affirmation. So I'm not seeing any chat on that. Okay, if you want to move us on to the affordable housing policy?
I sure will. Same thing here. I'll just give you a high overview and then turn it over to chat. Again, it was based on council's previous input and in alignment with, with known programs or plans that have been adopted. So a purpose here is, is council's commitment to effectively increase that housing affordability, both really, I was hearing through your words, both locally and regionally. You want to establish a diverse range of housing opportunities for, for meeting the needs of all life phases. And partnering is going to be a strategic strategy here that I heard loudly from, from council as a whole. So the policy, again, provides another set of guidelines or guide work and framework. It really is meant to complement and support the advancing strategies that you had already outlined and approved in the adopted 2019 Affordable Housing Plan. You did a lot of good work in that plan to establish a vision based on data that you received. So priorities here, some, some key indicators in the work were, from that result of the study, really said that there were certain households, groups that were proportionately, they had too few housing options to provide that intrinsic value of homeownership. And you found that, that important to try to address that in Morrisville. And you wanted to, you, you understand that it contributed really to long commutes, it influences traffic congestion. And more importantly, what I heard from you, it does actually affect retention issues and those quality of life constraints around those folks in the lower income, or what you call the workforce group. And that workforce group, you specifically called out teachers, you called out your first responders, you called out really your public employees, in a sense. Some of the ways in, in working towards that were identified these, these affordability tools through the Affordable Housing Plan. That's really that, that toolbox that you have. But the next step will be for council to decide which you prefer over the other. Staff is going to need some direction on that to be able to plan effectively, either operating initiatives or future capital projects, if that were to be the case. And then it's important to recognize, there is a strong correlation here in affordable housing, how it can influence these other policies you have with Town Center, transit oriented development, and even, you know, your land acquisition potentially feeds into affordable housing as well. So your priorities here, they were based on your input. Remember, while we have them broken up into short-term priorities and long-term priorities, it doesn't mean that staff's not working on one versus the other. It's just sometimes some things have to come before others in order, in order for you to be able to move those forward. So we did have this, this disclaimer at the bottom. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. In terms of a process, you, you recognized in this data that there was.
Sorry, Jeannie, could you advance the slides as you're
Oh, sure.
talking towards them? Thank you.
On that process now. Sorry about that, mayor. Thank you. So as we talk about process, some of the data and the information you received, there was this spatial mismatch between housing, jobs, and transportation infrastructure and a certain workforce group that you want to address. And there's some key steps that we're going to have to take towards building that foundation that are recommended within that Affordable Housing Plan, such as strong working relationships, incentive options and housing types, affordability options with, with complementary activity centers, types of assistant programs and other forms of incentive programs for, for lower wage employees. And then resource needs, if this one has potential to actually be an operating initiative, not necessarily just a capital initiative. So therefore, for either of those things, we have to assess what other operating resources we might need in the future to really make sure that this is managed effectively, whichever of those tools that you have a preference for. Identifying what those essential tools are, like a master lease agreement, and really incorporating a broad framework of policies and principles to help guide your land use or your development practices that open doors of opportunity in working with the development community. And then, of course, identifying strategies to really implement these, to put them into play. So there are various funding sources that are identified. And then, of course, we address maintenance as a policy. So I'll So I'll pause there and open the floor to chat input, questions. This is your draft.
Okay, looking over in the chat for any comments or questions. I'll I'll start off by saying that I generally lean towards operating initiatives at this time because those are things that are fully within our control in order to do any projects. I think we'd need stronger partnerships, including land acquisition, for example, and someone to manage actually building housing, like a Habitat for Humanity. So I think an initial step could be operating initiatives, many of which were already outlined in the housing plan that we approved. But if we're going to do more than talk around affordable housing, we do need to fund it. So we need to find a way to allocate some money towards it. I know we have lots of different priorities. Another thing that I don't see as much in here, and this was started essentially before there was so much discussion about social equity amongst all our communities. Homeownership, I think, is an important component of building familial wealth over generations. So I think that would hopefully be something that we would support as part of a policy. Not to say that we don't recognize that a lot of people are looking for renting a townhome or living in an apartment. And building equity in their homes is not a priority for them. But for those people who are teachers or anyone else who's looking to build familial equity, I think that that's something that we can strive to try to help with through this plan, to give people an opportunity to build, buy their first townhome, then move up to a single family detached or, and whatever their path is. I think I'd love this policy to reflect that to a certain extent because as a nation, we're a little bit behind there. And we're fighting upriver against a market that's looking to do essentially a lot of apartments. So we need to be intentional if we're going to try to do something else to try to meet the needs of current and future residents. So that was a little bit of a soapbox there, but I did want to share those thoughts. Looking over in the comments and chat. I don't see any comments. So I think people are generally pleased with what they're reading, would be my interpretation, Ms. Hooks. A lot of work, as you said, was done getting us to the housing plan that we've already approved. So I think that you've captured a lot of our thoughts over our many discussions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone for the time, and I will stop.
What what would be next steps for these two policies? What what do you foresee?
So next steps would be to prepare a briefing item to come back as as we did with the other three. So we'll bring them both together, of course, and allow them to go through that process for approval. And then next steps will be staff really incorporating and taking those, looking at the next steps in the process of what needs to come first, and then engaging council appropriately or engaging staff in some cases, depending on what those elements are, so that we can make sure that that we have things coming in the right order.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all the work.
All right.
Seeing all their comments in chat. I'd entertain a motion. Well, first I'll ask Town Manager Page, is there anything from staff for the good of the order?
Yes, sir. I think we should take a few minutes to talk about both the legislative agenda, information Aaron sent, and our town council meeting calendar. We could do that after a break if you prefer.
Okay, I think we could probably use a quick break. My computer reads 7:34 right now. So I'm going to say let's take a 10 minute break and reconvene at 7:45, please. Thank you all. Okay, it's 7:45 PM. I'm sorry, I'm going to be bringing us back into session. I'd like to recognize Town Manager Page to facilitate our next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick check, can people hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I have just sent an email. It's a resend of an email that Aaron sent you on Sunday evening regarding our legislative advocacy. She did prepare a prioritization, hopefully quick and simple for you. Break it down into three buckets, high, medium, and low. Please send her your feedback by 9:00 AM Thursday so that we can compile that for your December 8th agenda. And again, if you have not done that yet, I just resent it. So it should be at the top of your email box now. Any questions or comments on that item? Thank you. Thank you for that. The other item is I did send out a proposed calendar for 2021 meeting schedule. I I think inadvertently set off an unintended uproar. I had I had been working towards finding solutions to our our meeting challenges as far back as September, provided some some substance in that memo about options, conversations I felt I had had with what our challenges were. I proposed a schedule that really was designed to streamline work sessions during regular meetings so that we were not making heavy, major discussion topics late in the evening. So I I want you to hear neither I nor staff take the comments personally. But we we are trying to respond to the concerns you've raised about how we are doing our work. Staff doesn't necessarily want to meet more often. But we do have a challenge, I think we need to work through, about how we want to to do that. We we could schedule no work sessions. It will have an impact on our regular meetings. I want us to remain aware of what we have coming up on our schedule with bond referendum, CIP planning, et cetera. And I really like would just get some feedback so that we can prepare a better item for you on December 8th.
I do think that we all recognize that we want to be efficient with our time. And I think we have become much more efficient, but there still are not quite enough hours in our regular meeting schedule to make things happen. And then it becomes a matter of putting the puzzle pieces together because we have seven different council members plus staff to find a good night. And I think we've been really concentrating on trying to make it consistent, but we might have to be a little bit more flexible. Some Thursdays, first Thursday, some fifth Thursdays, some mishmash. I know that's maybe a challenge. There's been some different feedback from different people. I'm looking for the chat box for anyone who has any questions or comments. I'll recognize Mayor Protam Johnson at this time.
So thank, thank you. And thank you, Martha, for for sending that out. And you know better than anybody, it is easy to react to something than to actually come up with the plan you you laid out for the number of work sessions going into 2021. So I I others who have emailed you and and shared their feedback with the whole council, I'd like I'd like them to weigh in. But I will tell you, I think it's important that we schedule in some work sessions during the year. One of the the biggest complaints we have is when a council meeting, a regular council meeting, goes really late into the night. And, you know, we're tired and we have to make really important decisions late in the evening. None of us like that. So I think one way to avoid that, there are, well, there are lots of ways to avoid that. But I I think one suggestion you have about adding work sessions again next year, like we've done in several of the, almost all the prior years, I think is a good idea. If we become even more efficient, we can always cancel those work sessions. But I think going into 2021, it makes sense to at least put some on the calendar. So that it, that's just my feedback on work sessions right now. There, you know, you also asked us for some other, you know, adding a second meeting in December. I guess we can, we can kind of touch on all that. But as far as work sessions, that's my feedback right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Skrogins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, then Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm one of the council members that has a full time job, and then I go to council meetings in the evening. And when I signed up for this job, I knew that I had made a serious commitment that would be beyond the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. There are many different things that we do as council members besides meetings. We also work with the public. We work with our business community. We attend events that are related to representing our community and so forth. So we're specifically focused on the meeting schedule for our body. Many of our members are on other committees. And those committees sometimes have evening commitments. So it's not that it's hard to get everybody's schedule. It's like some people have already made commitments for evenings for, you know, government bodies or volunteer boards and so forth. So I, in addition to the second and fourth Tuesday, we do have a retreat that is annual. It's two plus days where we have the opportunity to really work and get down into details and make decisions and move the body of work forward. And last year was amazing. And instead of just taking that success, we seem to layer in even more meetings, which it becomes a little bit of a fatigue situation. It's like when you create a meeting, we tend to fill it up. And it's not necessarily always the best use of our time. So I believe that we should have the annual retreat, have our standard second and fourth meetings. We should have the additional budget sessions since that is really key. But we should not have a standing work session every single month. That that is not necessary all times of the year. I don't like having more than one work session that's added to a council meeting that seems to cause some challenges for some of us that work full time because we end up working a 16 or 18 hour day, depending on when we start our work day. But to just add a meeting, we're starting to have those work sessions last three to four hours. And then the council meetings continue to be three to four hours. It's, and then when COVID is under control, we will continue to have those advocacy opportunities outside of council representing Morrisville. So it becomes a very heavy schedule. And that is my concern is we need to have some balance. But we also need to be focused on beyond just meetings, how we can represent the town the best. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was next. So I think that, well, I guess I think that I'm about to be really unpopular. But I, so I think that right now, the, to me, the the engagement beyond the meetings, this may not be true for all of you, but for me right now, engagement beyond meetings is limited. I mean, there are some things that I do that I can do during the work day. There are some things that I do that I can do during the evening. But I mean, I don't, I think this is a good time to to realize that we, you know, we may have a lighter event schedule than we will when this thing clears up. So, you know, if there are things that we've been waiting to work on for, you know, a year or two, then I, then I think that throwing a couple of work sessions at that problem is a good use of time. And I feel like we, I feel like these work sessions are productive. So I don't, I personally don't mind, like, what time are we going to end up here? Probably around 8:15. Like, I don't, I don't actually mind taking a couple of hours and really moving some projects forward. So I I'm in favor of continuing to do that. The the scheduling problem, I wonder if it would be, would be better to to do. I mean, I know that it's hard to get everybody's availability, but I wonder if it'd be better, Martha, just a suggestion, like every two weeks, just say, what nights is everybody free? Then we could have a pop up work session every once in a while. You know, maybe we don't need to schedule them a week in a year in advance, but maybe just look for the opportunities to knock the top three or four things off the backlog. And then when the backlog's done, then we don't need to meet anymore. Yay. I mean, I'm not in favor of meetings for the sake of meetings, but it seems like we have a lot of work to do. And it does seem like we're getting through a lot of it.
And if I may go ahead and and respond to that one, because I think it's germane to the problem. So I will apologize to Councilmember Garamella. I missed that. I I owe him an apology. It was certainly not intentional or purposeful. It was, it was looking at the opportunities to meet. What I had consistently heard was two meetings in the same was something that we tried and was not working for people. I looked at the alternatives. And in the other case, there were five situations where it ended up being coordinated the same time as the PCB. So that's my mistake. It is, it is something that we can choose as a group to find another day. I will respectfully say, please don't make me try every two weeks to find out when you're available. That always fails. Unless we get these on your calendar, it takes hours and hours and multiple emails and attempts to find a time where everybody can meet. And it's not fair to any one of you to say, well, you don't matter enough to schedule a meeting, so I'll just schedule with the other six. And that's just a practical reality of of finding a time to meet. We have typically also tried to avoid our other advisory committee member meeting dates, which also just limits us. So that's just context for scheduling. It does appear that the Thursday I proposed does not work. But what are the options we want to talk about?
Well, okay, I mean, that was just a suggestion, Martha. I was just throwing that out there. But another thing is, could we, is it possible that for a work session, that there could be maybe a relaxed attendance policy where you can miss two work sessions in a year? And you could just, I mean, we all have the documents well in advance. You can just forward your your opinions to the mayor and have them represented at the meeting. You know, maybe that's an option. I I'm just kind of, I mean, I'm just kind of
And that that does already exist. That exists in our policy, work session attendance. I I think council members want to participate in those conversations, so they make the positive choice to attend. But there is a policy related to work session attendance and not being, I'll say, required.
Okay, well, I, all right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rau, then Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I personally do not have a problem with the three meetings a month. For me, and and we don't know any different. That's what the previous town council was doing. I don't know how long before we were sworn in. But that's, that's what I signed up for. That's the, what my expectation is. So I don't, I work full time and have other things going on too. But for me, it's, it's not, has not been an issue. The one thing I do take issue with is going till 11 o'clock at night, especially when it's not, when not everyone is as prepared or is not being as concise as they could be with their comments. So I do take issue with that. So I would hate to get rid of work sessions only for our town council meetings to go longer than they already are. So I'm fine with the schedule that you sent out, Martha.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rau, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, just a thought. I mean, I think for me, I'm I mean, I think for me, I'm fine with the work sessions being not on the table. That's the expectation is that I don't want work sessions.
Councilmember Rao, I'm really losing you. I'm either getting a lot of feedback or some type of interference. Is anyone else hearing that?
Okay, I'll, I'm going to have to move rooms. Come back to me in a minute.
Okay, we'll come back to Councilmember Rao in a moment. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, Martha, no apologies needed at all. You know, I know you're trying your hard, your best, you know? And for me, it is more of what Vicky said. It is, I know the new council members, it is obviously no set expectations for them. But for us, you know, we knew it was two meetings a week and we were open for the budget meetings to have, you know, till the budget, having work sessions, that is totally fine. But having it throughout the year is, for me, it is a bit too much. Because A, I, I would go back on efficiency of our meetings more than anything else. Because I was just thinking to myself, you know, you have City of Raleigh, 450,000 people. They have a bigger budget. Wake County has a bigger budget. And rest of the others, you take it. You know, their meetings are much smaller. What are they doing better? What are we doing wrong? You know, why is our meeting running five hours, six hours? So, so I think I'm not telling you here, because you're doing your job to, you know, make sure the work gets done. But fundamentally, why is it taking so long? And, and we are responsible for ourselves for this ones, you know? But at the same time, you know, like, how can we bring the efficiency so that we have a certain strategy of only few things get to us? We don't have to be, I, I can, I can go on, on a big laundry list of certain things which I feel are not needed, but some people might, you know, disagree. But the idea is to have a consensus of how can we improve on our efficiency? And that, that is where I'm going for. Otherwise, I agree with Vicky. We have a meeting, it will be filled up. So there's, I have never seen a meeting other than the last budget meeting of the year that gets canceled because the budget was signed. Otherwise, every meeting has been completely filled up. So I'm, I'm ready if we want to talk about the efficiency of how we can reduce the time and what needs to be brought up to us.
Okay, why don't we go through everybody? And then if Martha wants to facilitate her memo about the meeting efficiency at this time, we might get to that. Councilmember Rao.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me better. So I, I have no problem with the work sessions being done when we really need them. And I prefer them being done when we don't have the, on the night of the council meeting. I think what I've noticed, next week will be my 10th year on the council. And what I've noticed over the years, part of the challenge is there's so much more, more going on in Morrisville now, with so many projects being executed at the same time. When, when Mayor Holcomb was the mayor, we had a timestamp at 10:00. She was very efficient in running these meetings. And at 10 o'clock, we were done. And it did push us. And then the next mayor came in and said, we're not going to have a timestamp. And over all these years, I think a lot more has been going on. I think my only concern is that I really would like to see us shoot for the goal of having, which I think was the original intent, that the briefing meetings that we have on the cycle are longer than the voting meetings. So sometimes what I've noticed is that there's as many questions being asked on the voting, on the briefing meetings than the voting meetings. And of course, we're, I'm all to blame too, because I know I talk a lot and I probably interject too much and I try to get better about not speaking all the time. But I do think that's a problem. I think also, I would like to see us expect, sometimes I feel, and Martha, don't take this the wrong way, it's actually meant to be a compliment. I don't need the staff to give me back everything that you've already given us in writing through notes and updates. I trust the administration and staff enough to know that the things that we have are going to get done. And I do think it's a waste of time for any council member to ask, you know, you know, how high are the weeds? When is this getting done? When is this getting done? And, and sometimes I feel like we're doing that in the work session. And don't take that the wrong way. And I'm not, I'm just being very, very upfront and honest. Like, you know, today, Brandon Zudema, who's, you know, he gave a, was that really necessary to have on an agenda? It was an item that was so well done. That could have been just shot out in an email and anybody that had any questions could have asked. And that could have been taken off the agenda. Now, I mean, so I just think we have to, you know, make sure that when we do have the work session, we, we're designating enough time for the council to, to have big ideas rather than being an administrative review board for the staff. And I, and like I said, I'm just speaking, you know, you know, out loud here and I'm not pointing the finger at anyone. I'm just, you're sharing that this is a collaborative effort of how we get better. But, and so that's just my, my take. So I'm fine with the work sessions, but I just want to make sure that we're doing the work sessions so that we're giving enough time for the council to come back and say, okay, these are the ideas we have. I mean, we've gotten away from the roundtables, which were good, I think, because they provided a really good engaging idea. And then the roundtables got too long. But some good stuff has come out of the roundtables. Councilmember Garamella had the idea of Education Advisory Committee. We've had a number of different things. The citizen citation was another one. We haven't really seen a lot of that. Every one of you has had good ideas. Every one of our colleagues on the council has had really good ideas. The time should be spent as we go into next year. How do we make those roundtable ideas, policies and things that we act on? So sorry, I went over my time, but I just wanted to get that out there. That's, that's just my, my, my perspective.
Okay. I believe we've heard from everyone now. Really appreciate all those different perspectives. I'd echo Mayor Portem's comment that I think it's good to have them on the calendar and we can also cancel them if necessary. This was one that was scheduled to go to nine o'clock without even these last two discussions. And we're well ahead of time. I think we're becoming more efficient and more prepared. I think we were all prepared to talk about the three different work sessions. We had our questions all teed up. Staff didn't go through every line. So I think we are getting better and I think we will continue to get better. But I do think that we do need to allocate the time now because Town Manager Paige did note that it's very difficult during the year on the fly to try and find time that everyone's available. So those are my thoughts. I think everyone shared their thoughts. There was one indication from Councilmember Garamella about trying to be more efficient. And Martha was very kind enough to send us a memo to that effect a while back. And I think some of us reacted to that. Martha, do you want to touch on that one at all?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I'd, I'd, and some of you have said it in perhaps a different way. But the fact that we're smaller than a Raleigh and Wake does not minimize the importance and value of the work that we're doing. I'd also like to note both Raleigh and Wake have work sessions that begin at 2 and go for hours and hours and hours. We, we have not chosen to do that, although that was one of the strategy options I proposed in that September memo because of work schedules. And we have to respect those and know that not everybody is available to, to get off of work or do that. So, so that one was, was sort of left by the wayside. Again, without, I hope we're having an open and candid conversation. And, and, and staff, I hope, and I appreciate the fact that you do seem to have observed, staff is trying to do its part not to regurgitate information that you've had, that you've read, that you've prepared. We will continue to get better at that. But I'm just going to give you an example from tonight. On the sidewalk update is, is we were specifically talking about slides and specific projects versus the policy direction that council had previously provided. And even as I tried to steer us away from that, the, the comment by the mayor was, we have an hour. Well, that hour is an arbitrary estimate of the time I'm providing based on your conversation patterns. So, so, and also trying to schedule. But, and, and somebody else has said that if it's there, we're using it whether we need to use it or not. We, we also have a high attention to allowing the public to be aware of what we're doing, which is why we bring some of these items to you. We, we can continue to move some of those things towards administrative reports. But, but I think what staff observes is if we don't talk about them, they come up in a conversation and then we end up making a presentation anyways. In particular, as we come up in this coming year, again, you are doing such important work. And all of the presentations that we are making to you are, are designed to build to some of those conversations you want to have. What are your priorities? What are you going to do for bond? How do you want to plan your operational expenditures? How do you want a planned use of other resources that we may or may not have? And those choices that we are going to have to make. So we, we are trying to make sure that you have that. But it will still take your time to work through that together. That's not staff presentation time, that's council talking. The retreat is an incredibly valuable amount of time to do that. But if we're not done, then what happens? We do not want to miss another timeline for what's coming up for us in 2021. And an option, just, just to try to sort of bring us to some kind of maybe compromise is the, the Thursday before our second Tuesday meeting clearly does not work. Would the, the other best option I could throw at you would be that intervening Tuesday for work session. And if we don't want one every month, do we want to go to every other month? I, I don't know what that'll do to the time management. But is that a compromise that we could start with just so that there's something on there that, that will help us continue our work? So I'll just pause there.
Yes.
Okay. TJ would be okay with that? I thought I heard Councilmember Rao indicate that that would be an acceptable compromise to start. Looking for chat to recognize people on their thoughts. Recognize Councilmember Garamella.
So are you talking, Martha, the second Tuesday or, no, the first Tuesday or the third Tuesday?
It would be the, well, a first Tuesday is an option as well. I, again, I haven't, I haven't looked at that. I, I mentioned that this would be on the consent agenda for the eighth. I'll, I'll clearly take it off the consent agenda so that we can continue discussing it and, and, and make sure that we're, we're in agreement. But, but first Tuesday or third Tuesday? MPAC meets, I think, on the first Tuesday, which, which, so I would lend not to that. But that doesn't mean you can't consider it.
Yeah, I am okay as long as it fits the every other month. I, I'm certainly, you know, I'm, I'm okay for that. You know, because I just don't want the habit of every month, because that's, I think. And we should go back. I think you have given your things, you know, how can we be more efficient is where I would go with it.
And I, I, I will, I will continue to bring forth those. I, I appreciate council support in, in doing that. We also just don't want ever you or the public to think we're doing things that have not been supported by town council. So we'll have to find those strategies to make sure that we're continuing to be open and transparent with the work that we're doing.
You've indicated, we've given direction that we're not really interested in two meetings in a single week. So the Thursday after the fourth Tuesday doesn't really work either. Looking for other comments in the chat. Heard from Councilmember Rao, Councilmember Garamella. Mayor Portem Johnson?
So thank you again, Martha, for coming up with a solution. I think a compromise has to be reached. I think I heard a majority that are, that are fine with work sessions. I'm fine with them too. I would much rather have them on the calendar. We have canceled work sessions in the past. It's been a while, but we have counseled, canceled them when we have managed to get through our, our workload. So I like the idea. I think, Martha, isn't that what we originally did anyhow? Would, we had like every other month and we had a total of six during the year anyhow.
Yeah. And, and, and I know one of the questions that got asked to me was, how many hours are we spending? And certainly I do agree, we're, we're, we're spending more hours than for, perhaps when I first came to Morrisville. We are really doing a lot more. It's, it's, I don't know that I'm proposing more hours versus a redistribution. I, I will be candid and I don't know if Jeannie's still on the call. We do think you, you spread out your budget discussion because we had work sessions on the calendar, which is why we made a change in that. You, you clearly didn't need as much time. We were very efficient with that. So I was trying to spread it out a little bit more to, again, really focus on bond and CIP that builds up, especially this year with education of, about what we want to do to our community. But I, I don't know that it would be more hours. But I also don't know that it won't be more hours. But we, we did start with, with bi-monthly when we, we first started officially adding work sessions.
Anything else, Mayor Portem?
No, but there are other items, Martha. Do you want to, do we want to go in and talk about them now or you want to wait until next week? I mean, because you asked about a second meeting in December, which we usually always had two meetings in December. That, that was, well, I shouldn't say we always, but you know, it's been a number of years where we have eliminated that second meeting in December. And I think that has caused some angst over the years too. So do you want to talk about all these issues or?
I would tell you of all of the recommendations, that one to me is the least important right now. Because we have plenty of time to talk about that. And it's a big decision because, you know, it, it will be an election year. It, it, you know, so there will be a ceremony and, and we want to, to, so, so that, that could be something that we could talk about, ha, 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 as a work session item. That's probably the least important recommendation I made.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah, this is really quick, I swear. What if we, if we listed the items on the agenda? We had, we schedule a work session for two and a half or three hours to a month. We list the items on the work session. And then we have one or two provisional items that are the first two from the next scheduled session. And then whatever we get through by 8:30 or 9 o'clock or whenever the meeting is supposed to end, we get through. Eventually, we're going to get to the point where there's no backlog of work and we can start canceling the next session. I don't think we're, I don't think right now we should be looking to cancel works or looking to not do work sessions. I really don't. We just, there's just a lot to do.
Okay. Councilmember Fender.
I agree with Ann. I think we have a lot of work going on. I don't see counseling work sessions, although I do, you know, I hear what Vicky and Satish are saying as well. So I, I guess we need some sort of flexibility or compromise. But as my comment that I put in the, in the chat box, I'm just wondering if this would, if we can just give our comments, our feedback to Martha individually rather than talking about which Wednesday or Thursday of the month we're meeting in this meeting.
Okay. As was noted, I think there's general consensus that we do need additional work sessions. It's just a matter of how many. I think all are relatively comfortable with one every other month, at least. Some of us are comfortable with one per month. So I think this is something that, I'm not sure if we're going to get a good answer on this tonight, but it sounds like if Martha can schedule out at least six additional Tuesdays on the third Tuesdays, that sounds like. that sounds like something that's reasonable. And then we'll have to discuss as a group next time if we want to do what, five more in addition to that, which would be everything except for December.
So, so, thank you, Mayor. Let me do a couple of closing comments. I will, I will work on some additional options to send council. And I will commit to each of you to talk with you individually, I'd say, before next Tuesday's meeting. We'll put it on a consent agenda. It may be an unfinished item when you get your agenda, so that, so that I can talk with you individually and not sort of put you on a spot in a public meeting to try to find some satisfactory solutions. So I can, I can work it that way if everybody's comfortable with that. And for those that I can see, if you give me a head nod, we can sort of consider that one done. I know I can't do it tomorrow just because of work schedule. I'd like to, you know, just take another point of personal comment to you. Only, only one of you knows this so far, but my uncle, who was sort of like my dad, died on Monday of pancreatic cancer. So when Councilmember Johnson's talked about family members that are influenced by that, one of them is me. So it is, it is, funeral arrangements are pending, and that may affect me some later next week. So I'll keep you posted on that. But I did want you to be aware that I was dealing with that as well. And, and I know you all, you know, care about me, so I appreciate that. But it's a tough week for that and other reasons that, that you already know about my health.
So Martha, does it have to be done before the end of the year? Because we know, we have standing meetings, right? And so we can even take it next time, you know.
You won't, you have to do something, because you have no meeting scheduled for January, and we have to comply with public notice requirements. So we have to do something next week.
Yeah, something is, you know, I'm not trying to say, because with what you said, we have the standing meetings, two a month, you know. And so at least, you know, have that done, no questions asked. Then it gives you time and everything, and then we can come back, you can talk. It's not like you're rushing towards it, you know, we already have.
That's a good point. We could just approve the regular meetings and the retreat. I just don't want this to fall off our, our importance odometer.
Yeah, I think front-loading this is probably a good plan. And you mentioned the retreat, also the budget workshops that you expect that we'll need. Those should actually be done next time as well, I would expect. One thing that you mentioned early is that we try to avoid the nights where any of our citizen committee meetings are. And there are so many of those now, that might be an opportunity to find a Wednesday or some other, other than a Tuesday in that second or fourth week, that might be amenable. And I don't know if the council is open to that, but that might be a conversation when you call us each individually. Because generally, those meetings are being recorded at this time. So we still can have the benefit of viewing those, not live. But then that's also the staff, the staff couldn't be in both places at once. So I understand that's some moving pieces, but there's a lot of puzzle that you're working on, Town Manager Page. So we really appreciate the work you're doing towards that.
Well, I appreciate you taking some time to talk about this.
Okay. Anything else for the good, the order, Town Manager Page?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, council, thank you for sharing your thoughts. This is something that we do need to knock out. So I think I'm going to recognize one more person. I'll recognize Mayor Protem Johnson. We're ready to adjourn.
I was gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I have a motion for Mayor Protem Johnson to adjourn. Do I hear a second in chat? I recognize Councilmember Fender.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do the roll call on the motion to adjourn, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
Good work, everyone. It is 8:26. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
See you next week.
Please check your email tonight.
Please check your email.